... I will pray. And a problem with many of the constituents who are not going to take any action from the opinion of the law for standing in the way and another time, you will come to court, but I won't give you a chance for public comment. And not going to take any action to the judge will decide.
It's going to be a matter of one of the problems.
One, one.
Delayed.
You have a list of people.
I have a list of people who have public comment. Okay, first on the list is Mr. Ken Trump.
Thank you, sir. Um, I think you all know how we all feel. I have not gone into anyone that is for this, no one, and obviously that's why we're all here. On the March 6th meeting, I specifically asked you, Mr. Kennedy, if you were with how you are against this, and you said, "We are against this," and you said, "Let us do our job."
Oh, good prayers.
Yes, sir. And time has passed, things have happened, and I guess what a lot of us want to know personally, how each one of you stand on this, for or against. So we'd like to ask, one at a time, to tell us if you're opposed.
Okay, well, my apologies. You had that.
That's fine, that's fine, I'm just asking.
Ma'am, it's not really appropriate, because the jury has been sued.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
The reason I'm saying that, I'm not being disrespectful.
Okay.
You know, if you do that, then you're pulling the jury from being their opinion. We don't need to do that right now.
Okay, I understand. Okay, okay.
The judge will decide tomorrow.
Okay, okay, and the public is not invited, but the public is going to vote this court tomorrow? Okay. Well, y'all are our voice, and we just hope that you think of all the issues we have posed about, all of our, you know, problems. I'm not going to log into her a million times. Just think of us, and we pray that y'all do the right thing for all of us. Thank you.
Well, thanks for your comment.
Thank you.
Court.
Hey, I'm not going to take up too much of your time. My name is David Dark. I know everybody here. I know most everybody here that's in the audience. And I, like what has been said earlier, I think we're all in agreement. I've served as a part of the court for over fifteen years, and I've dealt with some of the most horrific human beings that you can ever imagine. And when I hear about the possibility of this mental facility, I'm not sure if that's the accurate term for it, being placed in one of our residential neighborhoods, I just felt compelled to come here and express to you my thoughts. And I know this is going to be dealt with tomorrow in court, but in the event that it comes before you as a police jury, I just want you to know my thoughts, what an awful idea that I think this is, what a terrible decision it would be to allow this, and how frightening it would be for the residents of our parish, especially those that surround the institution. It's my understanding that this facility will be accepting individuals who have been accused of a crime and are incompetent to stand trial. Make no mistake, these are some of the most unstable and dangerous human beings in our society. Individuals who have been accused of doing unthinkable things to their fellow man. It's my understanding that the proposed level of security at this facility will be comparable to that of a facility that houses patients with dementia and Alzheimer's. Let that sink in, just a minute. People that have been accused of a crime, murder, rape, in a facility much like that, that houses a loved one that might have dementia. And I have to ask, I have to ask our officials, why would our parish entertain this idea? Why would we want this in our neighborhoods? Why would we want this close to our places of worship? Why would we want this close to our schools, close to our children? This company is allowed to move forward, I believe it will only invite disaster. And I ask you, I implore you, when this, if this comes up before you, to let us know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Sheriff Jeff Travis, he's Bushett. I'm not going to be long. I spoke at all three meetings. I am adamantly opposed to it. I think that Mr. Dark explained it very perfectly in the nineties, so I don't think I have to go back through it. I'll just say that if the decision comes to you, and you have to make it please for the sake of the citizens, it is a bad idea. It's a, it's a, it's a very, and he said something today that I left the last meeting about, and he said, "The citizens are frightened." And I seen that. I seen that the last time I was here. I seen several people actually breaking into tears because they are frightened. People shouldn't be frightened, and I'm, quite frankly, I'm frightened about the idea of this being in a residential area. So, again, I'm against it, and I hope that if it comes to you and you get to make the decision, that you'll say no.
Senator.
Senator Taylor. Senator.
Senator Taylor, Columbia District 17. First off, I want to tell all of y'all, thank y'all for coming. I was a parish councilman in West Baton Rouge previously to, uh, when the Senate seat stood before you all, seems like not long ago. And, you know, y'all have, y'all have a job to do, and sometimes it's tough. But you have to listen to your constituents. You have to vote with your constituents, I want you to vote. You know, as a parish councilman, I didn't like the state coming down and telling us how we need to run our parish, and as a state senator now, I don't like the feds coming down and telling us. But there are certain things that need to take place, and I think that the state needs to step in on this for future. There are, no offense, there are active, very, very active parish councils. I was on West Baton Rouge, we created committee. Maybe y'all want to look at that as far as looking at your rezoning. Zoning ordinance isn't starting to clean them up a little bit, because we did the same thing that y'all did back in the nineties. Zone, and it was just a blanket zoning. And we looked at problems that we could have in the future to correct it then before you have anything like this, where somebody comes to your parish and looks at loopholes that possibly can sneak something in like this. So, as your senator, I will look to opinions from the state's side, because right now, we don't have any rules or regulations for, for, for a facility like this. Yes, we do have a cooperative endeavor agreement with this facility, that we will be funding a good bit, but I think that if we're going to fund this, then we need to have some kind of say-so. We don't need to put our constituents, our residents, our schools, our places of worship, endangered by a facility like this. So as far as the state, we do not have any rules or regulations that strictly falls on you all right now, but I will look for the future. If not this year in session, next year to make, to make sure that this will not go on any other parish. So, sorry that the, that the state does not have any provisions right now to protect y'all. It falls on your shoulders. So, listen to me, constituents.
Thank you, Senator.
You're welcome.
As I told the constituents in this room, it's a process we have to go through. Sometimes it takes a necessary, you know, take a longer than good for you. Give us a chance, go through the process. Because if that loophole, if you come back to school, home, that's a thing. Well, let us do it, but please, if I will let you go through, I'm very impatient, we really are. But you got to do it right. Long and long, okay, go ahead, we have to do it right. Let's only remember if Mr. Harris Grieblin.
Yes, my name is Harry Grieblin. I've been a resident of Evol, and for fifteen years, and clinted for five years for about a total of twenty. Devil Chris Hall is good to be it. And I wanted to let everybody know, I am totally one hundred percent against any endeavor of this nature. And in fact, the only question I have, and hopefully Sam won't throw me out of the building here, is that, how many of y'all going to be at court tomorrow? Show, show of hands.
How many, first thing?
Show of hands. So we got three?
Four.
Four? Seems like it'd be nine out of nine, my friend.
Thank you.
I don't care if you got a job to go to, take off. That's how important it is to the people of this community.
Yeah.
And please, do everything you can to get rid of this asinine issue that's going on in our community. Thank you, have a good evening.
Okay, Mr. William Henry.
Will Andrew, a lifelong resident, live on Bank Street. Property backs up to this, um, Grace Lane, money, I think you'll tell whoever it's called now. I just want to stand here, look at each of you, and I tell you that I'm against this. I don't think that it's, it's good for our community, for our neighborhood that immediately surrounds us. I echo everything that's been said here already. And I thank you guys for tonight, not coming in just, and allowing it to go through. And, but, as has been said already, if it comes back before you, and it might, and if it does, I'm asking you to do the right thing before you're, before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Mr. Chief Douglas.
Chief Douglas, I've been a member of the media here for the last twenty-two years, and a little bit drastically due to add to discussion here, but I'm definitely against this also. You know, to me, the main thing you have to look at first for any type of new endeavor that's going to be taken on, especially of this nature, is safety. I mean, if you don't have a safe community, what, what do you have, really? You got to have people that feel secure, that can live, that show can be allowed to play without fear of some type of attack by some person who may be mentally ill. You know, it's really sad to see that the people of North Baton Rouge, who got together and spoke strongly against this thing, actually prevailed. I have an article here from W A, W F TV, Channel 1, that was done back in January seventeenth, and also, well, this is the nineteenth. It talks about the behavior, Harmony Behavioral Services has not decided to move dangerous men and adults into the facility, go to Baton Rouge. They finally, as a result of the people speaking against it, decided to withdraw their, their plans to build this facility near schools and residences. And, you know, when you have some people here that are opposed to this, how can you in good conscience support it? I don't know if you can do that. I know there's a court issue involved here, but, I mean, we want you here to represent us. You guys are here to serve us, and we support you when you do that. But when you don't do that, it creates doubt, it creates unrest among everyone. And we need your support here, because I think you know that we don't want this here. And everybody spoke, I don't know, one person here has spoken in favor of it. And, you know, I just pray that we will make the right choice. You know, there's some things that are more important than money and making a profit. It's having a conscience, it's doing the right thing, which we don't see much anymore in this country. We need to draw a line, right here, and say, "We're stopping here, we're not going to go any further this stuff." We want our voice to be heard, we want to say the things we think are important to be said, and we'd like you to respond the right way, which would be support us. So we pray you'll make the right choice, okay?
Thank you. Mr. Donald P. Charley.
I had a plan, the good Lord qualified my path with a gift, I'm sorry. My prayer with our district attorney, my confidence is with him, and pursuant to the law of magnitude of the authority with the district attorney, the decision will be made at one point or another. But as mentioned before, I'm simply going to go ahead and enter this into the record, whether you have a future vote on it or not, you know, subject to the official authority. My name is Donald J. P. Charley. Good evening, gentlemen. I rise to adamantly oppose a proposition associated with Harmony Behavioral Services LLC. In recognition of the time limit, my comments will be both direct and brief. I believe that many people will make comments tonight with one thing in common, that this proposition under consideration is an abomination. If approved, Harmony Behavioral Services as a private entity will make money for the rich and to hell with any negative consequences for the surrounding population. Any member of this police jury who votes to support this proposition, in my view, is unqualified for being an elected official and has with their vote effectively signed their own political test certificate. I'm going to give it right now. Now, wise enough, from the Bay 28, we know that all, that God makes all things work together for the good of those who have been called according to his purpose. Please, follow my thought, that in a way, we can be very thankful for the petition of Harmony Behavioral Services LLC. Why? What could be considered good about this proposition? One, the proposition has created a volatile social dynamic. Two, the volatility created has awakened a number of voters. Just look around at the people here. Who knows how many are watching on TV and accompanied to their homes. Three, I have never seen such passionate unity between the races in East Los Angeles, here and now, working together. No one here cares what color you are, they care only that you are here, taking a stand, opposing a critical threat. Police jury members have the responsibility to devote. My real concern is, in the future, will the people assume their responsibility and hold the elected officials accountable? Ten seconds. Thank you. Thank you, Harmony, awakening a sleeping giant. The little people of East Los Angeles Parish, I believe, are awake. Time will kill. Thank you.
Mr. Charlie, what you say, God has a will bringing people together.
I appreciate your prayer.
Next one, the gentleman Brian. Brian. B U R R O U T H S. Burrows. 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 It looks like maybe a Ryan, R Y N. B U R R O U G S. I think it's Burrows.
Mr. Terry, Terry Carroll. Terry Carroll.
We have another signature on here that I taught writing for years, but I'm telling you, I didn't teach this person. It looks like, and L might start the name.
Ryan. Terry Carroll's here.
They should know if they started in there.
Thank you, Mr. Keith.
Joseph Jones, I live off of grocery room. Um, I just wanted to bring it different, different perspective to this. So I did eight years special operations in the Army. Um, you know, I chose, I chose my, I chose my life. I don't regret it. But every day I live with, you know, dealing with constant situational awareness. Um, you know, my kids will be outside playing. I don't really get to enjoy that because I'm looking at anything that may be out of police. I don't think it's fair to regular civilians to have to live that life, the ones that are going to be living close to this. So, it's not fair to them. They don't get to live a life of a constant, you could say fear, but more just always having to be.
On guard.
On guard, with, with your high senses and, you, you can't really enjoy the life, just to be honest with you. You know, I make do with what I do. You know, I have a great support system and everything. But it's just not fair to all these people. They, they didn't ask for that. You know, I signed up for mine, so I, I, you know, I live, I, I'm okay with living my life like that, but I'm not okay with having to see mamas, grandparents, dads, siblings, walk around with, they, they can't even go outside to play their yard, or just do daily tasks. So that being said, I, you know, I'm definitely against it, and it's mainly because I don't think people need to live that life. I hope y'all consider that from my, my point of view. Thank y'all.
I want to thank you for your service. It's my pleasure. I'm going to go ahead and prepare you up.
Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones. Thank you.
And my neighbor. Next one, in Natasha's chair.
Good afternoon. I wanted to come share some thoughts here, because I think I have a unique place in terms of everything you're listed these, so much better seen here. And I have filled an executive leadership role in opening, closing, and operating behavioral facilities across the state of Louisiana and nationally. And so, being one of this community, we think about the term excellent partnership for our community. And so I just wanted to share a few thoughts on what that looks like in terms of a forensic unit and creating an excellent partnership with the community. So first, the forensic unit does not provide medical access to anyone else other than itself. So there is no resource that comes to the community. You cannot give them those services there, it is not contributing, it only cycles, it only treats those who are, honestly, the adjudicator of offenders. The second piece is forensic units require highly specialized, highly competent laborers at work. If you know anything about post-COVID labor, the state disparities versus private pay, there is a huge compensation disparity. So the laborers that this unit would get would be the laborers that really no one else wants, or they are highly incompetent or highly unskilled with this type of work. And so when we think about safety, when we think about the endangerment, what happens to people who are untrained and unskilled have a unit of this magnitude? When I say magnitude, we mean high security, a hundred kids, which there is very little facilities in the state that can operate to that capacity. Sorry. Um, there is a term, forensic elogance, which means people who leave without medical advice, without any type of safety plan, with highly unskilled, untrained individuals, without a safety plan, without disaster management. Is our community ready to mitigate that risk? Has the unit provided a disaster and safety plan, or does it plan to get resources? We know a tree by the fruit that bears correct, and so have we researched the Harmony Center's other infractions. What does that look like? What is there, what we call an AMA rate? The rate that goes up when people leave when you don't want them to, because you haven't provided the curriculum, the instruction, the high skilled, competent people to do that. It doesn't happen. It risks the community, and it doesn't help the community thrive. The last one is, our community has finite resources. We're not a driving metropolis, we are a finite, tiny community, and we have to steward our resources. If, if something comes into our, to our community and siphons those resources, then what is actually left for the people? It is, it is, one, anyone in, within the facility that will come to the facility, none of them will be from this community. If so, there will be a subfractional portion of the people there, which means that people from outside of our community will be trapped against the table. I'll just wrap up. So, but, just from a healthcare executive lens, I would recommend having some independent investigation into what that looks like. What does the research look like? What does it tell us? It is, it is, one, anyone in, within the facility that will come to the facility, none of them will be from this community. If so, there will be a subfractional portion of the people there, which means that people from outside of our community will be trapped in this situation. So, I, I'll just wrap up the class. So, but just from a healthcare executive lens, I would recommend having some independent investigation into what that looks like. What does the research look like? What does it tell us? We know that the heroin, opioid crisis, all of those in the state, they're rising. So if we keep doing the same thing and trying to solve the same problems with the same solution, nothing is going to change. They call it insane. And so I just wanted to share, and if anybody else comes to ask more detailed questions around what this looks like, I'll be hanging out in the next minute. Thank you.
Number one, how can y'all trust a man when he come into this parish and not notify the public officials about what he's planning? When I saw that all that traffic passed by my house, I made a trip up to Mr. Lloyd Kent, who do you work with? I said, "Look, what's going on in that green light on right there?" He said, "I don't know. This man is like, was back and working a week before him, I knew that." Now you don't disrespect our public elected officials. I mean, how does that make you, how, how does that make you all feel? When a man just bullin' his way in, I said. And Mr. Darren Adams came by my house, and he, I said, "Why the hell won't come and talk to the people in the neighborhood?" He said, "He don't need to talk to nobody." That's the kind of attitude he got. Look, if we let a man come in this parish and do that, can you trust him? What's his, what hole he in his head? He was, what the hell he want? Y'all need to stop him now, instead of putting the neighbors alive in the, at least. Because I tell you, I've never had to walk out my door with a gun on my side, a pistol on my side, but if that come behind my house, I'm not be afraid to walk out there, empty handed. And I don't want to hurt nobody. And I know all of y'all don't want to hurt nobody. So please pray, and we're going to do the right thing, that's all we ask.
I was in my prayers, God, we need to, God, we need to do the right thing.
We're going to ask one question. And y'all can, you can, you can answer on this degree. How many, how many of y'all is your, uh, a player? That's the truth. Can I ask that question? Well, can I ask that question right now? Okay. But let me do the right thing for us. That's all we ask. Because the people that family elected you all because they had trust in you all to do the right thing, and that's all we ask. Thank you, sir.
We have a public coming, we have a taking action, we'll be in court tomorrow at one o'clock. Everyone welcome to come to court.
Forgive me, forgive me, I thought it was eleven o'clock.
No, he changed the time.
The judge pushed it back.
They put it back to.
The judge?
Yes, sir.
One o'clock. District Court, place of shame.
They couldn't. If I can't.
He's still here. Oh, really?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for saving some cash, bro.
Thank you.
There's going to be a referendum, people, is not?
Maybe call out the home?
Thirty-five. What do we do, just stand outside and take it?
Now presumed, you have a Facebook? Do you have a Facebook? I don't know what you call it, but a caller, Facebook page website? Do you, do you have it posted about the court?
I don't know.
Well, why not?
We could just have.
Just fall off of it, yeah.
Okay, I, I defer. You might put it on there.
At court time today, the judge started dating, we have a meeting at little two.
No problem.
Louis, this is downstairs of the courthouse.
I'm quite sure of it, yes, sir. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm taking the action, the judge will start tomorrow at one o'clock. I hope you all will come, that's right.
What is the judge deciding?
I want to issue a permit.
Issue a permit?
Yeah, whether or not issue a permit, I want the judge to start.
And, and as far as the zoning goes, that's never been decided?
Never have been, no.
Will it be decided?
It will.
Following a permit?
Come, let's come back if you write down.
Here's, that's the question that's probably best.
Would they have a, you know, I don't have anything against the energy, Joe, but would they have a list of the ones that supports and the ones that against?
We got to call them to vote, you don't want to vote come.
Y'all vote tomorrow?
I think he's asking, when we do vote, will we not be able to know?
Okay, that's good.
The list won't be too loud, I'll post on Facebook, it's a court date, and I have some of the suggested, many of those, many of them, Facebook, they're sharing, they're just major book on this shirt, put it there, and just only then.
Did you know who the judges?
The people. Thank you all for coming.
I just wanted to let everyone know, because it's a regular court day, Judge Jones will be in the large courtroom upstairs. Judge Piku, uh, Judge Walker will be hearing the motion in the downstairs courtroom. We got a ruling from the fire marshal today, there's room for ten people.
Well, now it's going to be these guys, so.
Well, there's room for ten spectators, there's room for the litigants, and the attorneys, and witnesses also on the other side of it. But as far as the general public, there's only room for ten, ten at a time.
Hey, that's not to say, though, if you'd like to, if you'd like to come to the courthouse, you certainly welcome to come.
There, there's only room at the courthouse and around on the grounds, but unfortunately, because of the fire marshal, we have to eliminate the number of people. And what it amounts to is, uh, each person has to have fifteen square feet.
I totally, totally respect the fire code, totally. And know what, I mean, fire code is fire code. There is a door, I assume, is secured for the courthouse. When will it be open so that someone can enter and be a part of the first gen? If he appeared there at five o'clock in the morning, is that convenient? Would I be over time?
I'd say you'd be a little hungry.
I like the rhythm.
I'm going to thank my fellow jurors for allowing public comment, so thank you very much for doing this.